Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Dearborn County Board of Commissioners Meeting, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Please rise and join me in the pleasure.
As a recipient of federal funds in support of Dearborn County's efforts to deal with discrimination and equal access to all citizens, the county gathered statistical data regarding citizens and county activity. Therefore, we have provided a voluntary Title VI public involvement survey at this meeting. You are not required to complete this survey. Marvellous form. It's anonymous and will be solely for the purpose of monitoring our compliance with Titles VI and ADA.
Thank you, Andy. All business twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting scheduled will be tabled from November sixth of twenty twenty-five. Sue.
That's right.
Do we need to approve the first meeting? I have an Andy question.
Yeah, if we're not ready to move forward with the whole calendar, you please leave. We need to notice when the first meeting will be, which would be the January. We're going with our normal date. It would be January seventh at nine a.m.
Okay. Motion to, uh, is that by Mr. Byer?
Second.
All in.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see if we can one of it. Uh, under new business, uh, we're going to have a discussion on juvenile justice system grant funding. Judge Niffengard and Prosecutor Glenn Dunn.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, so we're here, uh, last year, the prosecutor and myself applied for two grants. There's these youth, there's these youth grants that are being available for two years to each county. They're earmarked to the county for, um, to create programs to improve juvenile justice. So in working together, we came up with two, um, programs. One is a diversion program in the, which we used. That's the attendance program that, um, we implemented with the schools, that the schools are very appreciative of. And then the second program that we're working on is a day reporting program. We, we do that now, but we do it at the juvenile center. And, um, we're now getting a lot of, uh, people from out of county. Um, our population's a lot higher. We brought in like over a half million dollars in revenue to the county from the juvenile center this year because we're getting those people. But that also means there's some, um, tougher people inside the juvenile center. So we really need to get that day reporting program in place. So for this, we need your approval to, um, proceed with the grant. Um, it will be a hundred and
Fifty-nine thousand, one fifty-nine, two four four fifty cents is the grant that's going to apply for.
And, um, that will basically pay for, um, and some other things, but that will pay for the position who will be handling both the day reporting program and the attendance program. And so that's to fulfill that policy. And, um, we're, we were, we will get this money if you guys sign off on it. This is, uh, because it's earmarked for the county.
Beyond the, the structure, is this big enough?
Okay.
I mean, that's not, that's not really a large space.
So they, um, okay, so I also showed you, and, um, we've been working on this with, uh, Commissioner Thatcher, and this is the cost. So there's a basement classroom. That would be big enough for what we would have in there. But I wanted you guys to see it because, um, I've talked to the superintendents of the schools and they're open to helping fund the classroom, not in its entirety. I would need to be able to get some money from council, but I can't get money from council unless you guys authorize the
Going forward with the grant.
Going, well, going forward with the grant and then letting us use that, that space for the day reporting, Jim. So that there's two issues. One, if we can go forward with the grant, and two, if we can use the space.
The other question that I've got is, is there, okay, these are the truants. That's a basic classification. Will they be accessing the building through security?
So what'll happen is they'll have to be let in and go down the elevator. And so it'll be secure.
So through security.
They'll go through security, down the elevator. We have cameras down there. I mean, the beauty is that space downstairs has everything we need, but some walls. And, um, and I think if the schools go in on this and we get the rest of the funding from council, I think, I mean, it will be applicable. Get your trainings in there after hours. There would be multi-use for that that I think would go beyond this. I'm also very, um, I, the schools have also committed to help fund these positions if the grant funding goes away. I believe that once all the grant funds get committed, that they'll end up funding another two years. But if they don't, the schools have committed to, to help fund that position, the attendance position. So the schools are very much behind these programs and they would help, um, address the problem of juveniles.
What about desks and chairs?
We, that's, we have monies for that through the planning grant, through this grant. So we can, the grant will not cover building costs. It'll cover everything else. So we can, we have money for computers. We have, we have money left over in our planning grant to buy most of the equipment. Now, in fact, we had to ask for an extension, um, to, because we hadn't spent the money yet. Um, so they gave us a
An extension.
An extension, so then we can spend the money on, um, on the equipment. So we have money for equipment and, and if, if you guys approve the grant, then we can start the process of going to council. And then I can start talking to the schools about how much, because the schools had some legitimate questions like, you know, putting money in and it may be that we could build it. They pay rent or something. Because, well, if the program, if they put in all this money and then two years down the road, there's no program that, you know, that, so we, we need to try to address those concerns, but I think we can address those concerns.
Are you talking about all the schools here?
All the school districts in Dearborn and Ohio County.
And Ohio County.
They're all on board.
They move quick on all the stuff, so then it's even, check your calendars all to sync.
They all have the same attendance policy. They all sign, if someone moves to schools, they, they have to, they don't. What was happening before is people hit the number and then they move to another school and reset. Now, if they move, they pick up the numbers they had from another school. And the goal of it is where you're having elementary school kids, well, this is not the, this is the attendance program. We have elementary school kids who aren't going to, that's really the result of the parents. So the idea is to put services in place to help the parents. And, and what you have is you have kids, because they get the training on how to be a good parent. What, what you have then is you don't have the sixteen-year-old who first heard no when they were sixteen. And so it's, you're addressing the issues in much earlier. And, I mean, a lot of people don't know how to be parents these days. And so, um, this, this allows for that early intervention. And attendance at school is a huge red flag. It is the canary in the fool mine. If you can't get your six-year-old to school, there are some issues, right? So that's kind of the goal of this program. The day reporting program is what happens when a kid gets expelled and wants to attend. And he's also on probation or she. You know, I, I have kids that are intentionally trying to get kicked out of school so they can go work on classes online. And so we're just rewarding that, that conduct. So I've been putting them in day reporting so that it's not a reward, so they'll stick it out in school. So day reporting, we'd be able to implement services. There are several counties that, that do the day reporting. And the goal is just to try to get these kids the skills they need to be able to function and be productive members of society as opposed to, um, continue down the path. And then I see them on the other side of the courtroom when they're adults. That's what we're trying to do is prevent that.
So that'll be, that'll be the idea. How many folks we may be, uh, taken care of?
So the attendance, um, the attendance program, it's, it's many kids who get in trouble. There's not a capacity limit because the services provided are through DCS. The day reporting would be, um, initially capped at ten. Other than the going to council to ask for additional funds, there's, there's no matching funds with the grant, right? There's no, no, the grant just funds the position and equipment and, and other things. But it doesn't fund building, right? It doesn't fund capital improvements.
We need you to fill out some grant paperwork and then you have what is poured up.
Yes, and one is three times.
I can send that out to council because they have permission to let Liz sign that if everybody else agrees after they sign.
Can I give those to you or?
They, you guys have to sign off.
Just say one. Okay, that was my question. Good, okay. Uh, Rick, a motion to approve the juvenile justice system grant funding for Judge and Prosecutor Glenn Dunn to approach counsel for additional funding.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is there a second element that we needed to approve?
Wait, he said that in the motion, he said approach counsel for the place.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Pearlberg, where are you? If you want to come up and give us a update, Pearl.
Hi, Mike Pearlberg with, uh, One Year More Economic Development. Uh, here to deliver, uh, an update with some positive news on the Stellar Pathways Initiative. So, uh, we got great news this morning from Indiana Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Grouse and the Indiana Office of Community Rural Affairs. The Dearborn County has been receiving prestigious designation as a Stellar Pathways designee by the state of Indiana. Uh, it's an honor that Dearborn County should be very proud of, in my opinion. Uh, this is kind of Indiana's hallmark community development program. And with the designation, in addition to, uh, developing stronger relationships with our state agencies, uh, there will be something in the ballpark of seven to eight million dollars in funding coming from the state for community development projects across Dearborn County. Well, the other participating communities, which are the city of Greendale and the town of Hillsborough. So, uh, the news release that came out from the Lieutenant Governor in Ocrum is what I handed out to you. Um, so you can take a look at that. And, uh, the only questions you might have about this, and I would like to get a photo of our, with our sign. I came in with a picture for that.
I guess, since you've put in a lot of hard work, uh, I, I mean, we really appreciate all the work you engaged to get this done. I mean, this is a pretty good change.
It is.
All right, let's get a picture.
And, uh, we want to thank Mr. Thatcher for being a co-chair of our steering committee for Stellar Pathways along with Greendale Mayor Vince Carstetter and Doug Baker, the Town Council President for the town of Hillsborough. Come up to that right now.
Yep, these, these couple is.
One down or someone else?
Oh, you can come on down, I guess. Might be easier to hold sign. This is a new sign.
Oh, okay.
This one says primary settlement officially got the designation in. No, there's going to be plenty more opportunities.
Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, even the videos.
Stellar.
Oh, yeah. Drunk old soul's given.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Uh, there will be additional information forthcoming. But thank you again and congratulations for all of Dearborn County. And thanks to Nicole as well for, uh, serving on our steering committee. And, um, hopefully have Counselant Tim Bell representing Dearborn County on that.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. I wish I could stick around, but I'm going to want to turn off this.
I wish I could go with you. Okay, next up, uh, we're going to have the Planning and zoning director, Paul Daley, address the zone map amendment. Agricultural Homestead to local business.
Good evening. Nicole Daley with the Director of Planning and Zoning. Um, on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, a plant commission meeting, public hearing was held, uh, to hear a request for a zone map amendment by Bradford and Amanda Foreman, property owners and applicant AR Engineering. Uh, it involves approximately three acres of land along State Route forty-eight in Manchester Township. Excuse me. And they were, uh, applying to request for a straight zone change from, uh, it was proposed to be from agricultural homestead to local business B one. Uh, that meeting, there were eight plant commission members that were present for the case. And the vote was, uh, to forward an unfavorable recommendation, um, with all, with seven voting unfavorable and one abstained vote. And this is being forwarded to you, the Board of Commissioners. Um, and I will read that motion and that vote as follows. Mr. Russell Biazdorf made a motion for an unfavorable recommendation to the county commissioners for the zone map amendment request for a proposed three-acre tract from agricultural homestead to local business. Has the request failed to meet any of the required criteria. The request does not responsible growth. There is no sanitary sewer in the area. No local police for the added growth to the area. The current condition of the soil type is not suitable for a responsible subject system of a commercial development. And this type of commercial development would not meet the current condition and character of the area. The request does not consider the conservation of property values and the current surrounding land uses. And it doesn't follow the growth of outlines in the conference of plants. This motion was separated by Eric Lang and, as I said, some, uh, board members voted to, for the motion and one member abstaining the motion. Therefore, the motion carried for the unfavorable recommend, recommendation to the county commissioners. Um, so therefore, uh, as always with a zone map, uh, amendment request, this does come to you as a, um, a vote as well to take that unfavorable recommendation from the plant commission, um, or I believe it's to deny it.
Or send it back. Deny it and send it back.
Mm-hmm. Um, and if there's any more that I need to go into with this, outside of that, with the presentation that was held that evening, that was the only case on the agenda for that with, uh, the room was packed here. Uh, for that meeting, uh, gave simple opportunity for this to speak as well and address the plant commission. If you guys have any questions for me, there was a thorough packet that was included, um, with gathering information. Not only was that, that information, uh, handed out to the plant commission members, uh, but that was also information that was received before the meeting, um, emailed before the meeting and during the meeting itself. That you have in front of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I, I also sit on the planning commission and I was at the meeting and I listened to all the folks that work from Manchester and their concerns and I listened to the, the actual board and their discussions and how they arrived at the unfavorable recommendation. And Mr. Probst, if you would, uh, I'd like to have you make a motion to approve the unfavorable recommendation that the plant commission sent to the commissioners.
Jim, the motion would be to reject the proposal.
Reject the proposal.
The proposed, for proposed revision.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll go again.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now, anybody from Manchester that would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome or you can get up and go.
Hey, Rambo.
My first one's gone. Got some cares to eat tomorrow.
Yep, my first one's gone. Thank you, Jim. All right, moving on with the meeting. Next up is the reappointment of the department.
Hey. I was going to go one more thing. She's got one more, okay.
Um, a couple of months ago, I, uh, came before the commissioners, um, to give you a little background information. Uh, I'm working with, okay, I, I had applied for a, um, cohort or fellowship program. Um, and I have been notified that, um, we have been accepted into that program. That the, a program, uh, OKI put up the three thousand dollars that it was for the application and to be involved in the program. That way, Dearborn County benefits us. So there are two phases of the project. Um, the first phase including a development of a tree planting plan, tree, and the assessment, um, which will be developed by a, um, student that will be housed here between, uh, May and beginning of August. Uh, through that plan, as they create that plan and GIS layers within that. Um, once that is done in an area that the efficiency is, um, picked out through that, um, plan, um, there will be a planting of a hundred trees. Uh, they're just, they're more than just the saplings size that we've seen through, um, some of the other soil and water. Uh, and that will also include the professional planting surfaces. Those will be planted by an actual company. And they will be upflow watered and maintained through, uh, a couple of years as well to make sure that they, um, sustain their growth. So with that, I'd just like to be able to also say that, um, phase one of that, which is the planning phase of it, um, they have estimated at a value of seventeen thousand dollars. And phase two of that for Dearborn County has estimated at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So in working with OKI, um, that advantage will be here with Dearborn County that do that.
Okay, did, did score the one or do something else?
They, what they do is they, every year they've been doing the trees to residents, they're the saplings. Um, uh, they do that for hopes that residents of Dearborn County will take the native trees. Uh, this is more of your energy and your climate control mission, uh, areas that might have, uh, a, a need for trees.
Climate control too.
Yes. Um, so these trees will be approximately six feet tall. Um, just, yes, they'll, they'll be more than saplings
Okay.
Um, to help establish early, um, growth within the disadvantaged areas that, that choose, cho, chosen through that plant.
Thanks for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now, we can move on to the reappoint, no, no, the department heads, Ms. Hayden.
All right, this year the department heads are, are reappointed, um, by the commissioners. This year's done a little early because we've got some changes to the board. Um, the department heads to be reappointed would be Administrator ADA entitled six, Coordinator Sue Hayden, Animal Control Director Steve Hofstetler, Attorney Andy Bond-Distal, Building Inspector Bill Shelton, Emergency Management Director Jason Sullivan, County Engineer Todd Listerman, Highway Superintendent Ken Bryby, Maintenance Director Eric Hartman, and the interim nine-one-one Director Chris Heitmeyer.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Gooden, motion to approve the reappointments of the Dearborn County, uh, heads of department as presented by Ms. Hayden.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This was also done just to maintain operations because we don't anticipate a new, uh, person being on board until late January. All right, uh, Mr. Bryby, bid, bid awards for paving. Okay. I was suspended.
Yeah.
Skip again?
Yeah, we go over.
All right, we'll let that, we can do Tim. I'll set through Tim. Go ahead. Get up there, we'll get back to you. I got too many squiggles on my paper.
Good evening. Tim Bryby, County Highway Superintendent. I'm here to present the bids and have you sign the award letters for our community crossing paving contract. Uh, we had two bidders this year, which is most years with us, the contractors in this area. Milestone, we send letters and invite milestone and, and other contractors. They don't, they don't want to play ball. Uh, anyway, what, what the mouse do on that is they don't have paving plants close enough to us to make it worth their while to come pay it. So that's kind of basically how that works. Uh, this year the winner was Paul Rowe Company at two million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. David O'Meara was second at two million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Those bids were pretty close for that big of, big, uh,
Yeah, that's the closest one I've ever seen.
So, um, and what we're going to pay, that community crossing money will pay, uh, East Lottery, West Lottery, uh, road, uh, two Roberts, from Roberts Road to, uh, State Road, uh, two sixty-two. And then, uh, we're going to come back, uh, more this way. And we're going to do crossroads. Park Avenue in South Hill, trying to get some of that corridor finished out. Uh, and then we're going to go north into State Peaches. There's more of that in a minute. That's, that's what we're going to do on community crossing here.
And community crossing money was about, about three, yeah?
Three million.
Yeah.
So I have the notice of award letters that needs to be signed by all three and I have the acceptance letter that needs to be signed by all three.
I spoke motion to approve the paving, uh, county paving for twenty twenty-five as presented by, uh, Highway Superintendent Tim Bryby.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Community crossing.
Yeah, if we have community crossings, we'd be driving on red.
That's a program to take.
We would. I mean, it would, it certainly would.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's just two, Jim. One's like a notice, proceed letter, the other one's acceptance.
You have another one here?
What?
Oh, okay. Uh, secondary, we are out of our budget, which is via general, general fund. So when we go to, uh, that area up north at St. Peters, St. Peters will be done on that community crossing, uh, contract. And also while we're there, we're going to use our general, general fund that council gives us and we're going to go ahead and do Feller and Trackville too while we're right there. That way, we can kind of get some of that corridor taken care of too. Uh, Feller, Trackville, both have been, you know, lucky out of it, you know, when they did the bridge around 46, they got pounded to no end. I mean, we'd go out there and band-aid it, man-aid it. The state gave us a little bit of money back on that, but it was, you know, it did help some, but we got the chance to fix it and we're going to be right there working. So I think it's a good time to do it. So that's what we're going to do with that. Same thing, I got the, I got the notice of award and I got the acceptance letter.
All three of you. Okay, we talked, you're talking about the, uh, $498,547.20?
Yes, $489,547.20. I'm sorry, I didn't read that.
All right.
And, and let me, let me, I had myself. Um, it just went the opposite on that. Let me read, let me read this. I'm sorry, I had myself. Um, two bidders again, David O'Meara, Paul Rowe. Uh, David O'Meara contractor was the low bidder at $498,547.20 and Paul Rowe Company was at $540,017.90. Again, that was a very close bid. Uh, it's a little different having two different contracts kind of in the same area, but they won't be there at the same time, so it'll work out. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
That's okay. I've been ahead of myself all day. All right, any questions?
No.
All right, then, motion to approve the second county paving, uh, contract, uh, for $498,547.20.
$489, I'm sorry, $489,547.20.
Four nine hundred, four ninety-eight.
My, my material's $489.
Well, which is, which is which?
You show me.
You got, well, ours is higher.
Okay, and leave out $498,547.20 as presented by Mr. Greby.
So move.
Second.
All right.
Motion carries.
And what roads were they?
Uh, uh, Trackville and Feller.
It's my understanding, Tim, that, uh, Rowe is moving out of Aurora?
I did not know that.
Okay.
Just me. I have no idea. I, I, I talked to Gina and David and Gary both and nobody said anything.
We'll wait till it gets confirmed, but I think that may impact us a little bit when they're bidding if they're further north.
Well, they got a plan up there, you know, and, uh, so, because they'll pull all that, uh, St. Peters and all that out of North Plant. Well, they pulled all from the North Plant. We just had some work done and Roar on Dutch Hollow and all that material came out of that North Plant.
Did you just email those copies?
She doesn't. Yeah. Which, I can do email copies, bitch. She's, she's supposed to get them.
I think I, I have to call you.
I'll email them, please. If you want.
Okay, but we have time.
I got half my time, too.
Okay, go ahead, we'll check those times. They can over 50 thousand.
All right.
We done, Tim?
Yeah, I'm done. What you doing else?
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself on that one.
Understand, there's a lot going on here.
All right.
Rob, I can read it.
Thank you, you do.
I got my squiggle, Jim. All right, next up on the agenda is the appointment to fill a vacancy of the Deering County Redevelopment Board. We have, we have two folks and, uh, Trevor Bishop?
Correct.
You want to come up and say a few things about yourself, Trevor?
Tom Turner Bishop, who grew up in Dearborn County, thirty-one years old, moved to Harrison for a little bit of time, came back. Um, what I do now, for the most part, is I sell real estate and then I also work with my grandfather, Clifford Bishop, and we put homes on the side, so I manage that for him. But just, you know, looking for a way I can get back to Dearborn County. Um, this is something that I've worked with long in the past, talked about different, uh, different plans and he's put parts of things on, uh, up there, as long as I can remember, on their board. I don't know if there's any questions or.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, Mr. Tom, thank you.
Mr. TP, would you like to say a few words about yourself?
I would. My name's Tom TP and, um, I've been a resident of Indiana for quite some time, yeah, since nineteen eighty-seven, and, um, resident of Dearborn County these last five years. And, um, you know, of course, I'm a retired Chevrolet dealer and my son now runs the, uh, runs the business. And the, uh, I've been asked to, uh, to serve on this commission by the, uh, by the folks that are, and are involved in that, and, uh, so I agree with you that. My only experience with, uh, with this type of activity was with the YMCA, served on the Board of Directors of the, uh, Batesville YMCA for two terms, total of seven years, chaired the, uh, chaired the, uh, the board for two years. And, um, and also too, served on the Board of Directors for six years for the, uh, primary community hospital. So, um, and currently I don't serve on a board, um, or have any, uh, public service commitments. And when, um, this discussion came up, uh, I'm interested because I am a resident of Dearborn County. I own, uh, residential rental properties and of course, um, also too, some commercial activity with, uh, used cars. So that's in, uh, that's.
Okay. What do you live at, Tom?
I live in Aurora on Billingsley Drive.
Okay. Now, any questions? Okay. All right, Tom, appreciate it. Okay, uh, any discussion?
No.
Okay. Uh, Tom did come with a recommendation from the Redevelopment Board that, uh, they would like to have him as part of their, uh, as part of their board. So, um, how do you guys feel about that?
Rob's comment, um, I'm a strong advocate and supporter of our volunteer boards. Volunteer boards do so much good in the county, um, and they're helping us to move forward. With that, I put a lot of faith in the recommendation to the board. The board supports us, I like to support the boards. With that, I would make a motion, um, that we appoint, um, Mr. Tom TP to the redevelopment board.
I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
Now, I'll just note that this is, this appointment is just filling out the vacated term, so this will be reevaluated in January. Um, so it's, um, redevelopment members serve one-year terms and they serve until they're, uh, replaced or reappointed. And so if there's a vacancy, the person selected to fill that vacancy is just filling out the remainder of that term.
Right.
So, um, but how it normally happens is the board members. Right. So I'll just put that out there so everybody's aware.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? They're not meeting anymore this year. Are you talking about just filling out their term?
So this is, they're, they're, the redevelopment members serve one-year terms at beginning of January and they serve until they're reappointed or replaced with, um, so this, we had a vacancy, Tom has been appointed to fill that vacancy and will so until he's either reappointed or somebody else is filled to take that seat. I think the, if we're not, if the, the party's not, if the Republican Party can't get a caucus together until the end of January, we're looking at two commissioners' meetings in January with only two commissioners. So that's where if a rea-, if Tom's not reappointed or not replaced, he would sit in that seat until somebody is.
Okay, so they have to do this, the, the Board of Commissioners has to do this again sometime?
Yeah, the boards are going to be handled next year and, and, and this is something that Commissioner Thatcher and Mr. Bishop discussed with the department heads and the boards, and the boards are being held off till next year at, uh, Mr. Bishop's request, which I know Commissioner Thatcher was fine with. So this will be looked at again next month or if they can't be handled with.
I just wanted to clarify that because they didn't have a meeting anymore this year. That's why I was just wondering what you say.
Right. So.
Which position is this? Is this town or?
Uh, who, would it be the town that retired?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Hayden, Annual Certification of Elector officials' Compliance with Handbook and IC Code 36122.
Um, our Dearborn County Handbook, Section 2.2 NEPSISM states that each elected office holder of the county shall annually certify in writing that the officer is in compliance with the NEPSISM policy under Indiana Code 36-1-20.2. This certification must be submitted to the county commissioners no later than December 31st of each year. I am here just to inform you that I have had all elected officials fill out the form and except for one, and I have reached out to that one elected official and I have been promised that, um, and I will stand on that person until December 31st.
All right, this is information along the. Okay, thank you, Ms. Hayden.
Um, I have another item, which is, it was given to me just yesterday. It is the nurse agreement for the juvenile center. Um, it's in racket and we have, normally we will do a nurse agreement and a doctor's agreement, but the doctor, Dr. Dobbs, is retiring and they do not have a replacement for him as of yet. So I have Ronald Phillips for, um, the 2025 nurse agreement and that agreement is for, um, it starts January 3rd and ends December 31st and it's for $15,000 per year. And I would need all signatures if agreed.
Okay. Motion to approve nurses' agreement for 2025.
So move.
Second.
All right. Here, Julie. And as soon as they get a replacement for the doctor, um, I'm sure that will be brought back to me. Um, I have another item. Um, I was contacted regarding the Conservancy District, um, election that's coming up and we're, um, since we are freeholders, the commissioners get a vote of that district and the ballots should be coming in the mail next week. And in the past, the commissioners have given me the authority to go ahead and talk amongst yourselves and talk to me and get your feelings and then place the vote for you. Um, right now, we have, from what I understand, there are three running, um, and you choose two from those three. It would be Wendy Rainey, Mike, Noel, and Jim Kittle. Um, so I guess if you so desire to do it now, because I think the election is on January, they have to be returned Janu-, before January 16th. Um, so if you decide that you'd like me to do that again and.
Delegate to Sue.
Yeah, that's what we did last time. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, we delegate voting authority for Lawrenceburg Conservancy District Election to Sue Hayden, County Administrator.
Second.
All in favor.
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Robball claims.
Yeah.
Second. All in favor. All right. Motion carries.
Payroll. I'll make a motion to approve payroll.
Second. All in favor. Motion carries. Ten minutes. Motion to approve the board commissioners' meeting minutes for December 3rd, 2024.
So move.
Second. All in favor.
All right.
Motion carries. Mr. Button, does he have anything for us?
Uh, over here on the table, uh, in triple kit is a plot of easement. This is part of the, we're still trying to get the property, the hospital property transferred to St. Elizabeth. It's been such a long process because there's been so much cleanup work that Rob Steaks had to do. Um, parcels were in different people's names, um, and, and things like that, but this important piece is Lawrenceburg, I think, um, very presciently reached out to Rob and said, can we make sure all our utilities are properly located and that we have proper easements for all of them? Um, so this is a plot of easement, um, which shows those utilities and shows, you know, and make sure that those easements are, are recorded. Uh, so this is the first step in what has been a very long process to get this property transferred. Um, so I would just ask for a motion to authorize commissioners to execute the plot of easement after the meeting.
Okay. Motion to approve the.
Plot of easement.
Plot of easement as presented by Mr. Button. So move.
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
We can just sign this after the meeting. Okay. Motion carries.
Um, and I appreciate the reappointment. Um, I, Alan and Rick, I thoroughly enjoyed working with both of you and I wish you best of luck. Um, Dwayne, I look forward to working with you starting January 1st. So again, I appreciate the confidence and the reappointment.
Well, it was close.
Three zeros tough.
Thanks, Adrian. Is there any lay-to-arrival information? Call the comment.
Tri-Town Support Corporation, where the, uh, declaratory resolution of the Dearborn County Redevelopment Commission establishing the Bright Economic Development Area and Allocation Area and all matters related to it. I'm deeply concerned, not only for Bright, but for this. I'm deeply concerned, not only for Bright, but for this commission. I feel that there was a lot of incomplete information pertaining to the signing of this document. And the 15 pages of the development plan, it states on here, and what I'd like to first state is that how nobody reached out to the critical infrastructure of the community. Nobody has been in contact with myself, but yet there are dollar figures put into this. So I feel that this incomplete information that was handed to you that you signed off on does not represent everything that should have taken place as far as statutory obligations or anything else along those lines. Fay or Becker, nobody, nobody from Dearborn County reached out. And with being critical infrastructure that serves that territory, I find that very neglectful to us.
Well, I'll just say, so the final action establishing TIP District was done by redevelopment. And Indiana statutes, well, there's usually a process in place where you can appeal decisions of, board decisions. And those appeals are made to circuiter superior courts. So because that final action was taken by redevelopment, then it would be, if somebody doesn't believe that decision was appropriate, or that the TIP should have been established, then it's incumbent on somebody that needs to file an appeal of that decision with either the circuiter's superior court, which would require, you know, I would recommend getting in touch with an attorney that has knowledge on property law, given that this is dealing with TIP. This is, and with the, they meant, what, last Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be when you're, whatever the timeframe is, start to run.
You, what's the timeframe?
I don't know. I, I, I've never represented a redevelopment commission, so I'm just speaking in general terms. When board decisions are final and made, then there are statutory parameters in place for those decisions to be appealed. And that's what, that's what would need to happen if you believe this TIP shouldn't have been established.
Right. So that, that is my belief, because I think that with the critical infrastructure, and myself being deemed in responsible charge of the public health of my community, that I feel a lot of people overstep their bounds without even first contacting me before Tri-Town Support. One of our board members did bring this up at an earlier meeting this year, to which the redevelopment commission still did not contact at this point. And then I go back to talking about critical infrastructure. When we met at our office, June 27th of 2023, Mr. Thatcher and Alan, we were both there, talking about all the damage to the critical infrastructure taking place in our community with the fiber install that was eating up all the county right of ways. Nothing was done about that. So I feel that the most critical infrastructure of this part of the community has been completely left out of this whole master plan that calls for coordination and everything else that detailed in all these pages.
Okay, first of all, there was something said about it. We contacted Cincinnati Valley and asked them to look into that issue. So we did, we did act on it. So, and then secondly, if I'm not mistaken, Nicole, the time that the letters go out, if there's something going on, letters go out to all the utility companies to part apartments, and so on and so forth, if there is a building that would impact infrastructure.
If, when there's a specific request being made on a specific piece of property through, through our department, those are requests. We've actually, I've spoken with, Mr. Kinker, in regards to trying to work with our department and the building department because of the lack of communication with contractors, to try to help with communication with them as well, to ensure that contractors are doing what they need to do with the water out there as an overall thing.
And bringing that to light, we have a gigantic building built on State Line Road right now with a suppression system hanging in that building, which is not connected to us. We had no intentions of putting fire lines down South State Line Road from Bright. Once again, that was nothing contacted on my end. They're waiting on that. Our engineers will not approve that, until we have other stipulations met. And we all know the gigantic building we're talking about. And I don't know if that land was rezoned from still agriculture, still a full barn permit. I don't know even what-
Which, I don't know which one.
23383, I think it's the Madden Development Barn right there.
The full barn?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that wasn't, there was no rezoning involved with that.
Okay, so that, that's a business on agricultural land?
There is, there was no business approved.
Okay, so there's still stipulations?
There's still stipulations out of our office on how, what the building can be used for as well.
Okay. Because like I said, the building was big enough that it required a suppression system to be put inside that building. You have not our knowledge, once the building was built, it's all hanging in the ceiling. It is not connected to our water system. I've told them the timeframe's probably going to be well after March of next year before we can make a decision on that. So I'm seeing this trend that there's a lot of miscommunication when these plans are ironing out that we need communication for better development of our areas. And I feel that not being contacted about any of that stuff.
Well, it's my understanding that TIP isn't going to impact the water company. They're not talking about building anything, or expanding lines, or anything like that. They're talking about fixing some roads, and they're talking about doing some water issues, stormwater issues.
Right.
They're really, they're not talking about bringing in development or anything like that. That was another part of the discussion. If any of that were to come in, it would have to go to planning and zoning, and at that point, you would be, you would be notified.
So when it talks about, I mean, Tri-Town Water is listed clearly in this document on here, talking about the infrastructure of the community, so that's where I'm kind of at a loss, because, you know, I could go through each and every page.
And listing the utilities may be a statutory requirement that they have to put in there. Who's, who provides what utility? That may be in there because it's required to be in there. And, you know, again, that's where I'm saying, I would reach out to, because this decision has been made by the redevelopment, and that's a final decision, what I would do, if I have grave concerns about the TIP being established, is I would immediately find an attorney that knows half about TIP.
Right, because like I said, I was more concerned with the fact that you may have been given not all the information when you gave that approval for all these different departments that went through and created the TIP district, not knowing capacities or anything else that we serve, but yet they moved this project forward, and then you can put a dollar amount on that. So that's what has drawn my concern, you know, being in responsible charge of my community, and being completely out of everything that's taken place up there. And I spoke, I walked into it in a prompt two meeting, getting lunch at the Logan Store. Mark Doyle and David Dennis were meeting with two Bright locals in there. They pulled me into the conversation. The first thing I stated to them was my concerns, why haven't I been contacted? I was not allowed to speak at the redevelopment commission meeting, because it was not open to public comment, but I did speak afterwards, and I stated my concern. So if you're saying that the legal option is the way to go, then I think that that's moving forward, what we'll have to do, because I feel this is going to have a detrimental impact on not only my responsibility of the community, but for the people that we serve. So like I said, I was just concerned for the commission not getting the full information of what was going on here. Like I said, 13 out of 15 pages of this document that either you all read, or everybody read before they made their decision, you know, according to all the people that signed this document as well, which is the document that was recorded on the 9th of January, or 9th of July. It talks about water, sewer, stormwater, including water, alley improvement, adequate utility services. Nobody contacted, even adequate service.
I think Mr. Button just explained that perhaps that legally had to be present in that document. Because my knowledge is, there's no impact to you as far as the city.
So to your, so where did you get knowledge that there's no impact to our system?
Well, because of what they've said indicates they want to do. They're not talking about businesses or anything like that, or building anything. They're talking about fixing some infrastructure. Professional road is not up to grade. There's a stormwater issue there, and it likes to use some, maybe some sidewalks, or go up to the park, some things like that.
So I think that in the designation of the economic area, it states differently that this is to attract major businesses. They have to meet a criteria of gainful employment for the community. You know, all of that stuff can't happen.
And I think all we've said is that if anything like that were ever come about, to be put in Bright, that you would be contacted by planning and zoning, that that facility was there, and would be asked if you could provide it for capacity or not. Am I not, is that not true, Nicole?
Yes. In fact, just actually also with the Bright TIP District, as far as my understanding of it, with our department as well, was that because of the State Commission? And the way that I described it in front of the State Commission, because this is how I see it, you're non-typical TIP district. So your normal TIP district, when you're looking at it, you're looking at baking ground. You're looking at an area that a county or a community wants to bring in, whether it be commercial or industrial development. So they do look at all that infrastructure, because one example would be what Terracent TIP is. That initially was baking ground. That is to try to bring in bigger business centers to the county for a protected. This TIP district was taking an existing business area with limited baking ground to try to establish funds that will help that area. Because any funds that are generated in that area have to be spent in that area. So they recognize that this area, to be a good part of Dearborn County, is to improve the roads, the infrastructure, the drainage in this area. So that was one of the key points in looking at this area as a TIP district. So I always describe it as kind of a backwards way to do a TIP district, because it is already, it's a growth area that maybe grew too fast for itself in the 80s and 90s.
So in light of saying, like, the other building being served down there, several other issues I could bring up. Don't want to waste any more time, because we've had another house that was given a building permit. We didn't even have water at that location. So that's what prompted me, when I came down to the building department, first time I spoke to the coal down there, because I was wondering why there was no communication between county and the critical infrastructure. So I, so these are just problems that are getting stacked on top of each other. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page when it comes to any of the development down there. I'm not, I'm not anti-development at all. I'm just looking at being left in the loop, because I have a bigger responsibility to be met for the state of Indiana and the Department of Homeland Security. I take all of this stuff very seriously, and when people are coming in, trying to move these things without any type of operation, but yet there's a building permit issued, a house under root, and they want to know how to get water there. So those are the problems I've been dealing with, so I just want to make sure that-
The houses are different, because houses do not need public water.
Well, but I mean, they were given a building permit.
They were given permits, but they, if they don't do their research on what kind of water, because we do permits for houses on cisterns all the time.
Right, right.
So whether they tell us that the cistern or public water, it's still there, we're looking at, like, planning and zoning is looking at it as a means of what their setbacks and everything else. Now, as far as with their cistern or water, that's up to them to decide which kind of facility they want to go with.
Right.
And there's also a difference between building permit and certificate of occupancy.
Right. So this one pertained to a lot, to where my answer that I got from, I believe, a surveyor, was that they assumed that there was water there because it's in the subdivision, but it wasn't in the subdivision, never part of the subdivision, outside of it, where the county had a right of way out of that subdivision to this big piece of land. So like I said, there's a lot of things, when I believe it comes to critical infrastructure, that we're kind of failing when it talks about coordination in all these documents. And all I'm asking for is a little bit of coordination. So I just wanted to present my concerns to you, the commissioners, because like I said, there's a lot of information I found in here, so it looks like my only route is legal counsel moving forward. Thank you.
Hey, Ken, can you give?
Okay, is there any additional public comments?
I have a quick question.
Come up.
Guy from mine.
Tell us who you are.
My name's Brian Ruler, resident of Bright, Indiana, Dearborn County, lifelong. I have a couple questions, and good evening, guys, appreciate your, giving me time here. I just was down here tonight to observe the ruling on the zone map amendment that you guys discussed earlier up in Manchester. I was kind of watching that closely. From my understanding, had a large group of individuals from the affected area, joint property owners, things that came down to the planning meeting and expressed their opposition to the zoning change proposal. I had heard that they had legal representation. I was not in attendance at that meeting. However, I was in attendance at a meeting, zoning meeting, back on May the 28th, 2024, that concerned the zoning map amendment for four parcels in the center of Bright area, which also are part of the TIP district that he was just talking about, where a request was put in to change the zoning on those lots from B1 business to high-density or free residential area pertaining to development of townhomes. Similar to the story that Nicole was telling about the Manchester meeting, this room was packed full of people, clearly 99% of which, the ones that got up and chose to take time at the podium and communicated their opposition of the proposed zoning change, citing several of similar complaints, and such as what Nicole was describing earlier. However, that zoning amendment was given favorable recommendation, and therefore later passed by you guys. And as a resident of the community, I'm just curious as to, and I applaud you for representing the wishes of the people of the community of Manchester, who were here earlier speaking out against that development. But I'm curious why, what, what was the difference? Was it that they had legal counsel? I mean, what felt, what made you guys feel more compelled to side with residents in Manchester and reject that zoning amendment change where the people of Bright weren't afforded that same consideration, it seemed?
Well, we usually go with the recommendations of the planning commission, because the planning commission has people sitting on it to understand the differences and how things should work. And we've got surveyors and folks that have been on the board for a number of years, and we usually go with their recommendation, and that was a recommendation they made.
Right, and you were, you were in attendance at that meeting, correct?
Yeah, and I listened to what people had to say.
Right.
I didn't vote on it.
I didn't know if you had a recommendation for us as residents, if we're trying to-
That's why we have the planning commission in place, is to evaluate those things, and then advise us as to how they-
Well, I should go. I understand that. I'm saying, as a resident, would you have any advice to me or others in the community as to how we can better communicate our feelings about proposals and developments and things that occur in the, in the county, so that we can feel better represented?
I'll say, so there's specific criteria that have to be met for a rezon to go through?
I was talking to them.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you exactly, sorry, would you?
No.
I apologize. Apologize. There's specific criteria that have to be met for a rezon to go through. In my opinion, and if you guys disagree with me, please let me know, my advice would be to highlight, if you're, if you're opposed to a rezon, my advice would be to highlight specifically how the requested rezon does not meet those criteria.
We did. I have the, I would feel very confident to feel that the wishes of the people and their objections were very valid and expressed very clearly that night, and that's why I'm posing this question. If there was something you guys would recommend going forward for us? I didn't know if there was something procedurally that we didn't do. I mean, clearly, the opinion of how people felt in the room was made very clear that night. I think you wouldn't disagree with that. Not getting into any of the specifics of it, just in the most general sense, as a citizen in a representative government, trying to be represented, if you guys would have any advice that you-
I think Nicole would like to weigh in.
Yes. So the thing with rezones, just you, they can, I wouldn't even ask them to, they compare the two. You can't compare two different cases.
Okay.
So when each request comes in, that's why each request gets a meeting on its own, and its own staff report, and its own review, and because the county as a whole is not the same. So you have to look at each case individually and differently. So to tell a citizen that in one area, to do it this way versus another way to look at it this way, it's hard to do unless you're listening to what Andy said, is the criteria that's placed in there, and then you would have to get specific for each case to be able to explain that difference.
Well, we were pretty specific. I think we pointed out a lot of the- Well, we were pretty specific, I think we pointed out a lot of the drainage problems that actually became a strong argument for the TIP district.
The planning commission was very specific in their recommendation as well.
But in, but in both instances, it was spot zoning, and both instances was in contradiction.
Spot zoning, now, I wouldn't say spot zoning for Bright was not the case in that one.
Please let me finish. It, it appears to me to be, to be spot zoning, and that in both instances, you had a reversal or a change of position, or proposed change of position on, you guys had just redone the whole county zoning map back in February, you know, and even with the thing of Bright.
Because it's not such commercial or industrial property. We did not change anything related to business or commercial, B-one, B-two, or industrial property.
Right, it was, it was residential, but in this, within this change, you, you are changing a former business property to, to R-three residential within the constraints of a business district, so it's kind of an outlier in the proximity of things that surround it. I get that behind it on Memorial Drive and further back, you have residences, but it is in a business cluster with Bright Automotive and Shift, and, and Performance Electric and a lot of other businesses. But I, I wasn't coming down here to our, you know, to debate any of these things. I was just asking you guys, again, appreciate your service to the community, and just trying to ascertain if there's a better approach.
To answer your question, you're doing what citizens should do. You went to the planning, the redevelopment board, or, uh, planning commission.
I've been to all of them.
Okay. What you're doing.
Well, I, I appreciate.
In, in some cases, based on the board's recommendations, and based on the judgment of the elected board commissioners, they're going to support what you're asking for, sometimes they're not.
Well, and the only, and, and my last point that I'll make, and I thank you for your time, is that I understand and acknowledge that there's a lot of specific intricate details about both of these zoning changes that are quite different from each other, as Nicole has pointed out. However, to the average person and resident in this community who maybe don't have the background or the knowledge to articulate those specific differences and changes, at a surface level, it appeals as a resident that we're coming down here and, and doing our best to express our feelings as citizens of the community about some of these proposals, and we're seeing kind of a difference in, which I understand specifics are different, but in one situation, a room full of people come down here and say, hey, we oppose this, and it gets an unfavorable recommendation. In another situation, this, a same room full of constituents and, and adjoining property owners and people in the immediate area come down and express the same thing, and they get, and then there's, and a favorable recommendation is given. In that instance, it, it feels inconsistent at, at the surface level, and, and to the eyes of the layman, just kind of glancing in from afar. So I, that's all I would have to say, so, but I appreciate your time, appreciate you guys listening to me, so thank you.
Anyone else to public comment? Will you come up? You have to come up, tell us who you are.
This is real short, my name's Dave Penny. I've been asked to read a statement on behalf of AR Engineering in regards to the Manchester rezone. Said, would you please provide findings of fact for the denial to AR Engineering? I'll just quit my own record. Thank you.
Are you guys sending us a formal letter, or are you just reading a safe?
Just reading a safe.
Andy?
So it's the planning commission.
Yeah, the, the finding of fact coming from the planning commission.
Okay.
You have that already?
And we put it together, it was just, was, was the finding of fact of the recommendation was in that motion.
Okay, anyone else? I think we've gone through the entire room. Okay. Commissioner comments, Mr. Porter, send you the honor.
I'd like to commend the maintenance department, do this every year. They put our decorations up, the entryway looks great. A lot of effort, and not only do they do that, what they do every day, cleaning this area. They're just hardworking folks and deserve commendation, and particularly during the holidays. We appreciate that. Second thing, I have indicated my intention to retire on January fourth. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community in a variety of roles. I'd like to thank my wife for her support. Sharon has, you don't know how much the spouses contribute to our ability to support the community, and I really want to thank her. I also want to thank the department heads and the employees for their dedicated service. They're what make the county work. And they do a great job, and they don't get enough recognition, and they're just fantastic folks, trying to serve the public. Beyond that, the citizen board volunteers, they make a lot of things happen, they support the county government. They do allow us to make good decisions, I think. And without those volunteers and their expertise, we would really not do as well as we do. That's all I've got. I want to thank everybody in the room for your support, and what a great meeting we had people here. That's, I mean, that's what it's supposed to be about, is people come in and communicate to the board, and so many times, we sit here and it's just us. This has been encouraging. Thank you. Mr. Good.
I would like to thank the citizens of Dearborn County for allowing me to serve as both the councilman and commissioner for nine-plus years. Having been a long time, well, native of Dearborn County, and a long time resident and a businessman in the community, it was my goal to give back to my community who had been so very good to me. It now starts a new chapter in my life, and I've enjoyed the nine years that I've been down here. I will continue to give back in many ways, and, and that will, some of it will be to give back on volunteer boards and community boards and committees within the county. And I too would like to thank all of the employees of Dearborn County who have worked so hard to accomplish so much in our county. You know, we talk about stellar and all that kind of stuff, without, without the good employees that we have in this, that work for this county, we would not be able to accomplish some of these things. And, you know, Rick mentions the, this beautiful courthouse. When you, when you watch them girls, I mean, they clean this place, it is for you. They do a fantastic job, and every chance I get, I try to tell them that, because it, it just looks absolutely stunning when you walk in here. You're very proud of, of this courthouse when you walk in. So, once again, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for their service and the time that we've worked together. They're not here, but I'd like to thank my fellow councilmen that I served with. Sometimes we had arguments and debates, but we finally were able to accomplish the things that we needed to accomplish. So, anyway, thank you all very much, and been, been glad to serve.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, yeah, glad to.
Okay, well, I still have four more years, so I'm not going to thank anybody. What I would like to say is that it's been an honor to serve the folks up here. I appreciate all your input and your thoughtfulness, and I wish you best, both the best. And it's hard to see you go, stay in touch. I don't know how many folks know, but Rick and I actually graduated from high school, and so we've, we've known each other since we were, I don't know, kindergarten. What was it, Munderon rival?
Boy Scouts or Boy Scouts.
Like I said, I'm not thanking anybody yet. So, anyway, with that, I wish you guys both, nothing but the best, and stay in touch. With that, Mr. Pope's?
Want to adjourn?
Wish you to adjourn? All the thing.
All right.
Maybe you can turn around.